Liberty and Justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our City of People Bay. We do have Council meeting at 8:00. Please welcome the board. Uh, Kim, would you please call it over? Councilor Bieseley?
Here.
Councilor King?
Here.
Councilor Brett?
Here.
Councilor Mazzella?
Here.
Councilor Sovereign?
Here.
Mayor Short?
Here.
I haven't heard from Councilor Watson. Okay, so I had a check on my four, so it might be a little. But you have a form?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Um, are there any changes and additions to the agenda this evening?
Um, I've just a couple of, it's like grammatical errors. Um, if you look at the minutes.
Okay, we're doing changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry for the agenda, I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
There it goes, so, um, um, the minutes were five to one under S. On page four and five, there were just incomplete sentences, it's minor, but I think that would be corrected.
Sure.
And then we'll write to you on that, page four and five.
Okay.
The first paragraph.
Yeah. And.
Are you talking about the first paragraph of the comment?
And then there, where, um, where it says Chris Berry, um, starts with Chris Berry, I'm sorry, it starts with, um, Crystal Blackberry on page five, that's an incomplete sentence, so it's just minor, but I think that would want to be corrected.
Crystal's last name is not Blackberry?
Crystal Blackberry.
That is a connection with Ron's wife.
Hmm.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
I have a question with regard to accounts paid. And pages eleven, thirteen, for example, invoice, they invoice the century link. And the one just above it, May twenty-four, simply can't P U D. Uh, and I'm sorry, somewhere along the line I missed this, but it's under utilities and garbage. And could you explain how, how we classify that? Because I've seen that also in another page here, under Harry's Garage Utilities and Garbage. Is that how, is that what the?
Harry's Garage, okay, so utilities and garbage is essentially that. Water, well, we pay water, um, electric, uh, garbage, obviously, we pay gas, um, phones, um, internet, things like that.
Utilities.
Garbage is garbage. Um, the other one that you're talking about is Harry's, that is actually, it's other utilities and garbage, probably because there was some, depending on what it was being used for, so for example, if he was using it for demo maintenance work.
Okay, thanks.
Any other corrections or additions? Is there motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? I'll raise that motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there a move to second to accept the consent agenda as presented? Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, public hearing, okay. I'm gonna read part of it, and then Kim is gonna take over for us here. Um, this is Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M. This is the time set for the city council public hearing in the matter of the zone change and preliminary plan for phase two of the Well Watch Plan Development within retail commercial C one and residential R one zones. Case files number one dash dash Z C dash twenty-four and number one dash P D dash P C dash twenty-four. The applicant is Hills, Hills of People Bay.
The applicable relevant criteria upon which this case will be decided are people based zoning ordinance section one fifty-two point zero two five residential R one, section one fifty-two points zero three zero retail commercial C one, section one fifty-two oh four two plan development P D, section one fifty-two oh five five supplemental regulations, section one fifty-two one eight five, amendments section one fifty-two two two five, developing guidelines in section one fifty-two two five zero plan edition. Statement of rights and evidence, all testimony or evidence presented toward the application being heard must be directed for the relevant criteria obtained contained in the depot base zoning ordinance, whether city plans or policies, or to other criteria such as personal beliefs or claims to request. All persons shall raise issues with sufficient clarity so as to allow city council or others an adequate opportunity to respond to or resolve the issue. Value to address that criteria before the close of the hearing record precludes an appeal, calamities, or appeals based on that criteria. Failure by any interested party no later than the close of the hearing record to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with specifics sufficient to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages based on those issues in the circuit court. Prior to the closing of the evidentiary record of this hearing, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, testimony regarding the application. If a participant requests such an opportunity prior to the close of the evidentiary record, the city council may either continue the hearing for at least seven days, or leave the record open for at least seven days to allow a submission of additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony. Seven days then is then allowed for response to the new evidence, argument, or testimony, and seven days shall be allowed for repo. Under O R S one ninety-seven seven sixty-three. Right to appeal, an appeal from an action will leave the city council, maybe filed with the Landes Board of Appeals, L U V A, within twenty-one days after the date. The city council's decision is reduced to writing and bears the necessary signatures and is mailed or otherwise submitted to parties entitled to notice according to Party Law. Appeal will need to comply with the L U V A appeal procedure, and L U V A should be contacted for information regarding the appeal. And in order to have standing for an appeal, a person must have been, re- mailed written notice, or have participated in writing, or in precedent of planning commission public hearing, or at the city council public hearing, or have been substantially affected by the action of the law. Procedure, following presentation of the city planning report, record of proceedings, and decisions in the planning commission, any interested party may present information regarding the application. The proponents, those agreeing with the application or heard, followed by opponents, those dis objecting to the application, and other interested parties who are either for or against the appeal. Any of the proponents may speak in rebuttal of any testimony presented in opposition. Those providing testimony are asked to state their name and address for the record and provide name and mailing address on the assignment sheet. Council members will have the opportunity to ask questions for verification after each testimony. Um, first is to call for any city council member's declaration of interest, expertise, contact, or bias. This is me asking, sorry. Anybody want to declare anything? Okay. Um, is anyone present? That would be everybody here. Um, in opposite, is anyone present in opposition to any member of the city council to hear this case? Um, a party wishing to disqualify a council member from a decision, so provide written notice to the recorder at least twenty-four hours of anybody hearing. Um, party meaning the person who is a party, this will does not apply to the public. Does anybody want to speak in opposition to the city council hearing this matter? And now we'll turn this over to Kit Fox, who will do the staff report, and then we'll finish and give out with the rest of it.
Thank you. Uh, so at a public hearing that was conducted on March thirteenth and April seventeenth of this year, the depot bay planning commission approved preliminary plan for phase two of the Well Watch Plan Development. The commission's action included recommending approval of the related zone change to the city council. The commission's action was memorialized in findings conclusions in the final orders dated April twenty-third. It would have to leave staff report this evening, and also part of the draft ordinance. And the planning commission's decision was vacated. Approval of this change requires city council to adopt the ordinance, which includes the diagram of the proposed zoning districts and related preliminary and the related preliminary plan for phase two as approved by the commission. On May fifteenth, notices of the public hearing were mailed to owners of property located within two hundred thirty feet of the subject property, and they were published in the public hearing on that same day. Verification was also provided to the Department of Land Conservation and Development as required by O R S, which resulted in public testimony from Fair Housing Council of Oregon on May twenty-fourth. F H C O, uh, testimony is, that date is attached to the staff report this evening, and I'll mention in a moment about some additional input from them. The nine point three five acre site is located at ten thirty-two North Highway one oh one, generally northeast, really got the intersection of North Highway one oh one and northeast Lilian Lane. The applicant requests approval of a zone change to implement phase two preliminary plan for the Well Watch Plan Development. Phase two is proposed to consist of forty detached multifamily residences, a four unit multifamily building, and a zero point one five acre site for future civic building or use. There are total of forty-four residential units proposed in this phase. Use of these units as first accommodations will not be allowed. Northeast Shoreline Drive is planned to be extended northward from northeast Lilian Lane to access phase two with additional streets, north of Sand Dollar Drive and northeast Bellin Drive, to provide circulation within the phase. And, um, the staff report under attachments that are provided electronically have copies of the exhibits that were presented to the planning commission, but we thought it might be helpful to provide some larger copies of those to help with, because they're really easier to read, so you should have found set of those, um, after your background, and before you go, there are already here to decipher that, the electronic version. So, the zone change, which is just a one sheet diagram, proposes to shift zero point three eight acres in phase two between the existing C one and R one zones, which results in a net reduction from the commercial zone property within phase two. So currently, um, based on the current zoning in phase two, which is R one and C one, um, there are six point eight one acres of R one and two point eight three acres of C one zone property. The proposed zone change, the R one P D area would be seven point one nine acres, and the C one P D area would be two point four five acres. The C one zone will apply to the zero point one five acre future civic use site, which is identified as lot fifty-five in the preliminary plan. And with the remainder of the area, uh, so the C one applying to two point three acre areas of open space located generally southwesterly, southwest of the corner of the phase, that will include stormwater detention basin, uh, in the future, is identified as track P in the diagram presented this evening. The R one zone will mainly apply to the area east of northeast Shoreline Drive, which is lots twenty-two to fifty-four, will also include a few residential lots located west of northeast Shoreline Drive, lots fifty-six to sixty-three. The proposed plan development or P D overlay will be applied to the proposed C one and R one zone of batteries in order to implement their preliminary plan for Well Watch Phase Two. As I mentioned, the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, similar comments requesting a copy of the staff report. In an email that we received on May twenty-fourth, provided the report and the draft will be organized to them. And we've got additional comments from Fair Housing today. Yes, which was distributed to you this evening as part of the late correspondence. And just in summary, um, I'll just stay in reviewing the staff report. I was unable to find any gold ten findings citing the current housing meaning, that gold ten refers to statewide planning goal, gold ten housing issues. Um, I recognize this is kind of a gold bird with fair housing speaking. I recognize that given people base size, you may not have traditional data sources such as a housing needs assessment or billable land inventory. Common needs by which municipalities Oregon or if you identify what their housing needs are and how they're able to build the land for housing. However, if you do have any facts that can be used, we would appreciate that, you know, supplemental finding. Um, so you'll see if I responded to that, and that, and our staff's response would be that, um, if the the ordinance before this evening passes first reading, uh, and introduction at first reading, that we would recommend that the staff would wrap an additional finding to be included in the ordinance that specifically addresses gold ten. Again, we don't have the kind of hard data that billable land inventory or housing need assessment would allow us to cite in terms of exact numbers and units of the city needs in order to meet its portable housing goals. But I think that there's, uh, there's enough anecdotal information that we can rely on, uh, reports from, um, major employers in the community and other sources that there's clearly a need in the community for affordable, more affordable housing, for workforce housing, for folks who who, uh, work in the local tourist base behind, I think, who cite those types of, uh, so those kinds of, uh, conditions, I think, that should satisfy the requirement for at least what Fair Housing is looking for, so. Again, I would recommend if we, if we move forward, um, with the ordinance, then that would, what we would recommend doing then is in the draft ordinance before this evening, in the, after the third finding, the third whereas, uh, we would add another finding in there that again summarizes, um, the perceived and actual need um, for additional affordable workforce type housing in the community as a, as a motivating factor in improving, you know, site development. Um, so at the, uh, city reporter cited at the beginning of the, uh, in the, uh, the open script, the, the relevant criteria apply to several sections of, um, zone ordinance that apply. Um, these are the same sections that the planning commission also considered in its review of the preliminary plan and in making its findings conclusions in final order, requesting, requesting and recommending approval of this zone change. And again, if the council agrees with this zone change of preliminary plan, then it can move to approve or introduce, I could say, the draft ordinance in, by first reading. The ordinance requires actually two separate readings, so again tonight would be introduction at first reading, and then there will be, the final ordinance presented for second reading and adoption, that are future date certain to be determined. That concludes staff presentation, the developers here this evening, if you have questions, okay?
Thank you, Kim. Um, so the next up is, after the staff report, is proponent testimony. Uh, I'll open the hearing for the proponent testimony, please. Do you want to state your name?
Chris Vanderbilt, uh, Ben Oregon, and I am the developer, managing partner of Hills of People Bay.
All right.
I'll sign in.
Please.
So I think the biggest thing in the zone change is that the original plan before we acquired Well Watch was just a straight line across middle of property, bottom third of property, top third of property. And what we found was when we started this, actually, even design for phase two, that it was better for, again, not to use workforce or affordable in a, in a way that, um, we're not working with the agency to get workforce or affordable housing, but we're trying to create apartments or little cottages that we can rent to people working at depot hills or in town or anywhere else in the community. What we found last year was that, uh, a lot of people working at some of the houses we're building were trying to rent them to reconsider or import, and they were paying, I mean, they built some outs for, you know, two, three thousand, two and a half, three thousand dollars for a small house. We think we can build housing that we can, um, rent much more affordable rates, you know, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars, uh, for a two bedroom unit. So that's kind of the goal, uh, with this product. And when you look at the C one, R one, I think there's eight units, I mean, uh, Mr. Fox mentioned that fifty-six to sixty-three are the eight units that would sit down in, um, in the old C one zone. And we also realize that, you know, commercial need in that area won't happen for seven years, so we're giving up point three eight acres of commercial zoning to R one, which should be this better served for, for that kind of, uh, housing. You have the plans in front of you, those are, again, draft summaries for little two bedroom cottages that we think are, um, are, is someone, its own footprint, Vanden Dews did a similar thing with employee housing. Uh, you know, Vanden's area, they, they built it for, um, employees, their caddies, and it's great. Uh, visited that, and they have little cottages, little courtyard, and people having their own house rather than a multifamily in two thirty-two unit building, that wouldn't look good if it entered the people base community, so we want that plan, and, uh, we feel that it looks pretty well, and the planning commission liked it a lot. So, any questions for me about any of that?
Oh, yeah, all right, thank you, um, a few questions. Um, what, when you say civic building, what do you have in mind about civic building in the C one?
Uh, I think that that would be, uh, either a depot, community, town hall, or depot hills, Well Watch. We bounce around ideas, we don't know for sure, but like Jim, childcare, daycare, if the people that are working and living there need something to do that, or, you know, some kind of thing that would be good for the community in that area.
Thank you. Um, I, I like the idea of smaller, you know, single homes, actually, was the trend, and if it was really, if something's eighteen hundred dollars a month for two bedroom, that would really be, uh, an asset, so thank you. So my major concern, and I can't tell, um, from your diagram, I'm hoping I'm seeing what I'm seeing, is that the trees shown along one oh one, or sort of shown, are those that are the natural spruce and, um, short pines that are already there that are going to be made change?
Yes, all, all these, all nine.
Because when you start up Lilian Lane, there's been a big, good area that's now been cleared for grass on the, on the north side. That's not what you have intended for the rest of the space, right?
You mean right, right, right near town, Lilian, that was, that, that was a previous development before us, and we have no intention to take down those, these spruces.
So, um, and along, um, one oh one, um, between one oh one and your property, there is, I think it's called, without one of them, set back a right way, would it also be your intent, maybe you would have any, you wouldn't be taking down trees in that, um, right away, so, and, so on your property, you would maintain as many of the trees and natural vegetation as you can?
Absolutely, and that's our, our goal all along, and I, I think I mentioned this last time, what we did at Tetero, and I think it's, it enhances the community to have heritage, we call them heritage trees, maybe twelve inches, if you can say them, uh, put them between houses and people in there, it just, it just makes the community pure, natural community, and that's kind of what, how we develop and how we like to develop, it's just, we'd rather earmark a couple of pretty cool trees and make sure you keep all of those, all, uh, you keep them there and, uh, make nature trails through it, you haven't got the nature trail yet?
Yes, I've got the, uh.
There's a nature trail that goes between depot and Well Watch to the top. Let me check it out.
And then, um, my question about the detention pond, that's going to be taken drainage from half the development, it sounds like?
That takes drainage from the southern part of phase one and two of depot hills and Well Watch, and it's the natural flow that goes down, uh, into that area, and the drainage pond just cleans the water before it goes into the, uh, stormwater that's already goes under the highway, so you have to.
So, um, there's some existing wetlands there, but you're not going to utilize the existing wetlands for the detention basin, or you're going to make a, uh, outside of the wetland area, I mean, I'm asking a question, I don't know this for sure, and I can't tell. Is, are you avoiding the natural wetlands and making your own detention basin for the drainage?
Well, right now, we're working with core engineers, armed core engineers, to delineate exactly where they are, because the old maps and the new maps aren't picking the exact spots. Um, and the goal with them is to make sure that we maintain everything we can that's existing. And if we have to mitigate some of it, we mitigate some of it, but the goal is to keep as much of it as possible. Um, we've been working diligently with them, and, uh, I think that they walked the site two or three times now, and we've got one more visit coming later this year to really get the exact delineation down, you know, to get exactly what that is, so I hope I answered that question.
So, um, it is your intent to avoid the natural wetlands as much as possible?
As much as possible, we will avoid natural wetlands, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah?
Chris, it's good to see you, uh, you've been with this project a long time, and thank you for your perseverance. It's amazing, it's finally getting some mercy, it was good.
Um, I don't have any objections to anything in here, but I was hoping you could, as a developer, give me some insight into your planning process here. One of the things that I would like to see is that, I'm less interested in apartment housing, I am in the housing that workers can actually afford to purchase.
Yep.
Because, you know, that's the first step on the road to wealth in life, is homeownership. I think it was, Chris Rock's got a great routine on about how, uh, homeownership makes you walk the, the straight and narrow path with all that responsibility. I look at these, uh, units that you've designed here, and I see what would otherwise be called townhomes, uh, that could be sold individual. Did you ever consider doing that?
What we have is that, we just think that, um, uh, in the first phase, we're not sure that we could sell those for the right price, but I think that in the, in the future, they're all individually platted, so they will be, they will be fee simple that we could sell to people in the future. So if you have one that really wants to be there and likes it, then that is only for negotiation, so that, it is, um, we think it's the most affordable plan that we've been able to pick up and purchase here. And we think that we can, uh, put the infrastructure in. Um, again, I've never gotten into the dirt, we haven't figured out anything with the, uh, core of engineers, but we're getting closer to the price and what the infrastructure is going to cost, and then, I mean, you, you can have a, a unit that is affordable to buy. It just, again, what's that, what is affordable, what was it? Ten years ago, twenty years ago, versus what it is, you know, I think COVID and the fires and corporations kind of killed things, but if, if, if interest rates come down and we can afford it, then sure, it's easier, one of our, in our planning process, one of our easier, one of our exit strategies is you build these units, and if you build a multifamily building, you have to sell the whole thing to one buyer. If you build thirty-two individual units, you could sell S number two individuals if they want to buy, if the market's there. So, who does this man, so if the market's there and the price is right and it's affordable, um, I think that that's the goal.
Did you, did you ever theorize about pricing?
I have.
What did you come up with?
I think that, um, it's, you know, this is a public record, so I'm not sure of the tech numbers, but I know that our, our lock costs and our infrastructure and our build cost, you're somewhere in that, um, three hundred plus minus fifty thousand dollars, and you, okay. So that's, that's, I think, the, the, you know, plus minus fifty thousand at this day and age, if someone could afford that, first, it's a pretty small unit, let alone its worth of feet, it's, you know, you're in there. I think that, um, once, the best way to answer that question is, once you build them and you know what it's going to cost to build them here, uh, refining, you know, that sometimes you get some. we're finding, you know, that sometimes getting some of the trades, getting people to be here, like I said last time, there were some of our framers were paying, you know, two and a half, $3,000 for a two-bedroom house. Their costs go up, so then our costs go up to build. And it's, when you have the finished product and you know what it is, then you can actually do just a reasonable markup on that kind of housing because you want that for your community and your employees. That's, that's kind of the goal. You miss that opportunity event, and I've said this before, planning commission here. My wife and I, we built Tettero. We really want to have a community here. If you ask the question about civic buildings, we want, we want to really create that here. And that's one of our goals, you know, sort of a, we call it traditional labor development, where you can walk to stuff and you can get places and really fit into the community. And that's kind of, well, that would be the endgame. So I hope that answered your question. And thank you, Chris. Yeah, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other person waiting? Okay, so now we have an opposition. Is there anyone in opposition with? Okay. Okay, I'll post the public hearing at this time. But we need other interested artists.
Oh, and our interested audience.
Okay, we've got a black proponent. Are there any call for any quests or is there a call to request hold the record open?
Now can I close it? Or post? Okay, thank you so much.
And then there's a statement after that. The recommendation tonight is to introduce the draft ordinance for its first reading leaving the public hearing open and continue the public hearing to future date certain for its second reading and adoption. That is from your statement.
So is there a motion to accept a reading of the first draft of ordinance number dash 24? XXX.
I will make a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading of the draft ordinance number dash 24 at tonight's meeting and continue this matter to a future date.
Second.
It's been moved to second to accept the first reading of the ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Depot Bay. Is there any discussion on the motion? So the motion is just for reading or is there to change any of the, or to add it to any of the conditions of approval?
It's to accept reading of it, the first reading. The motion's booked. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we do, is there a motion to accept reading the in ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Depot Bay, ordinance number 24 as amended, to establish an overlay zone of planned development over certain parcels relating to a proposed planned development known as Well Watch Phase 2. I move. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved to read, second to read the ordinance amending the zoning map by title only. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we do have one amendment, adding a number four national need of the, with the Urban Housing Act, is that correct? So that would be an addition to this?
Right, so when we go back, the ordinance for second reading and adoption will include additional language.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes. Is, is that required by state statute that we do that? Is it, or is it, is he just asking for that information for us to be included? I, I'm just curious what that whole process is, is there for and why they're asking for it?
I think it's not necessarily required of us, given us being the city of Depot Bay, because many of the the recently enacted housing laws and ordinance will quickly beset middle housing and multifamily housing and single family zones and these type of things don't apply to us because of our population, we're below the 2,500 population threshold, which is required. But so I think it was essentially a request for bare housing that we included reference to GO10 compliance. These there wasn't something explicit in there.
And do we know what the level of effort that the staff is going to spend on creating that for them? The additional finding, the other
I mean, the research and whatever else you have to do. No, I think it should take minimal additional effort. I mean, it's going to be, the finding is going to be an additional sentence or two, so added to. Thank you. Yeah. And I think it was going to capture some of the things, some of, I was making notes, I think it will capture some of the issues that Mr. Mandeville was talking about this evening in terms of the need for housing for his employees and other employees and community folks having to commute from outer Lincoln County to work here because they can't find work or have some business, those types of. I'm glad you know that type of language will get included in the ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. So I have questions about, not necessarily for this, but for every, for because of what I was, there's a lot of representations made all the time about what people are going to do and what they're not going to do and you know, what things are going to cost and what the intent is, that sort of thing. Are, are we able to capture certain things such as, you know, mature trees will be maintained as much as possible or maintained or the hatment will be avoided for that the intent is to have affordable two-bedroom housing, whatever we're hearing tonight. Can we put that into the the conditions of approval?
I think that some of those issues can be included in the conditions of approval. In, in the exhibit B of the ordinance, which is the findings, which is the final order of plan, which is the document, which is 28, 32, for example, top of that page, condition 8 is, this is the landscape conditions. And it talks in there, 8B, tract in app company maintains with native vegetation. You can refer to the guide reference to see where some of these are located. Were disturbed by construction activity, these areas shall be replanted with spruce or similar species with applied ground cover to prevent the growth of invasive species. Traps GHI, JKL, MM, NO, NP, PSD, trapped with the stormwater basin. Company actively manage landscape areas maintained by the homeowners association, including native species or people appropriate. And then it goes on to talk about landscaping, Jason, to the right way of being maintained without site distance. So those conditions are explicitly in the findings, these are the final order of this right now. I think if the, if there's interest in expanding those, the language in those or adding additional provisions to that, it's possible to do that and we can, I think that we would recommend doing that case is in the draft ordinance. And so that's landscape conditions, for example. The, the issue of wetlands and the, the what Mr. Mandeville mentioned, everyone, the developers are going through a process right now with a joint urban application to get the necessary rules to do the work that they want to do and to mitigate any, any weather that might be affected by construction that we're doing.
Excuse me, that, that's state and federal rules, but the city also has both five resources to protect. So, I mean, I don't want to just totally defer to state and federal, we also have, you know. Or do you have concerns that need to be addressed? Yeah, I think we wanted to put them down and we'll submit them in the second meeting. Is that appropriate? I can do that? Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think if we, if there's a desire to make some, to make some amendments to the conditions at least as amended by the, the planning commission through their action, there, according to, in the, in the ordinance itself, on the second page of the ordinance, when we get into the the sections, rather than the recitations, under the section four approval, it talks about the order of the town, the planning commission dated April 23rd, 24th, being approved and adopted in its entirety in the Core 45 reference. I think that what could be done is adding a clause there with the following additions, modifications, and then listing specific changes. So there's a condition 8A should be revised to read as follow, or a condition shall be added under the section to read as follows. I think that, that would be a place for that to be done. So I think that there are, I guess, I think that there are certain more objective types of, of criteria and conditions that could be added.
Okay.
I, I think that the term affordable is a little too nebulous. And everybody's definition of what constitutes affordable is different. And there's big A affordable, capital A affordable, meaning indeed restricted, subsidized versus low ranked affordable.
So low rated, I think.
So I think that trying to condition affordable housing would be problematic in terms of how anyone would challenge that or say, okay, what's the best way to see homeowners being offered at some point future order affordable? We don't really have anything to fall back on, to.
Well, we could define a certain percentage of the whatever, you know. I forget. Should we do that without you doing anything?
I, I really, yeah, I I'm hesitant, I'm hesitant to, to kind of go in the direction where we don't have anything in the zoning ordinance right now that establishes criteria for affordable housing that's based on income or percentage of the median income. Other measures that are commonly used, I think just pulling numbers.
So the, the problem as I see it is that we've had developers come and go, you know, they've been investing a lot of time and energy, money. But they took over somebody else who had all these promises made to us. So as much as we can get in writing, I think that helps us condition.
Submit it to kit.
Everybody's in agreement about the last one.
Yeah. Well, Mayor, I would like to say one thing about that. And that I didn't see these kind of omissions in here or holes in this proposal. I think the council brings up some good points, but Mr. Heddenhoff gave us a, a, a nice memo on how our restrictions and rules and things that we do to drive up the cost of housing. So as we're trying to, we heard tonight a report on how this was an effort to create housing that is affordable in this market for people. And if we start larding new conditions on the developer at this late stage in the game, all that's going to do is drive up the cost of construction and the cost of these apartments. I mean, there's a real link between what we, you know, our attempts to micromanage things and the end cost. Thank you.
Pardon me. Yeah, so two things. First, if we're making a substantial or proposing substantial strange just between the first reading and the second reading, we have to start all over again. So if we're going to propose substantial, then it has to be first reading and start the process, not the hearing, but just the process for the ordinance adoption. Secondly, even though the city does not necessarily fall under some of these conditions that the housing authority, you know, through the governor's office, we could still run afoul of them. And if we start trying to restrict and try and set conditions on what affordable housing looks like, depending on what we set, we could run afoul of the statutes even though we're not under. So I would really caution the council to be very careful about what kind of restrictions you want to set that makes it more challenging for somebody to come in and build affordable housing.
So submit your ideas to kit and review.
Okay. I'm just trying to capture what's set, not to create additional conditions.
Okay. Yeah, we can review.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's, you know, obviously any of the council wishes to talk about changes. Mr. President, the city reporter mentioned that I think we may be getting into an area where the change is very substantial enough that it will need to have another, a new first reading rather than coming back to the second reading at the next, the next meeting or whenever, you know, comes back.
Are there any other comments on the first reading of this ordinance? Okay, we will move on to guest presentations. I'm going to defer to the Lincoln County Senate committee, Carrie, for a deputy to come up real quick.
Yeah, my apologies. I was just coming back from vacation and I didn't know he would be here. Why did you be here, but I didn't know you were here? These reports were provided. If there's any questions, Deputy Elstrom, one of the things that has, has come up at the budget committee meetings in particular, has a question about your enforcement, what do you do, what citations you issue, like what, how do you spend your time in Depot Bay? And I appreciate for myself, knowing the contractor, I like having how much percentage of time you spend on training and things like that, you know.
Right, and that's, and that would be
I hope everybody noticed that, that
Yeah, going forward, that would be a lot. We're still tuning that also, so if it's possible. Especially for the training time, the safe time, vacation time, as you can see, there was training, there was vacation on there. We're trying to capture other deputies who spend time here in my absence. But that just takes a little bit of extra effort, but it is not on this one. The whole climate issue will be.
So you had 13 citations for one and 14 in the next month. If I may ask what they are, I mean, what are they?
Those, I mean, a lot of those are drywall suspended, no insurance and then speeding, I start writing my citation to a certain speed limit, so I'm not going to say where it is. I will pull over. I have that range where I will start calling people over and then another range that people start getting citations. And that's not always absolutely true, but typically it is true.
Any questions for our deputy?
Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Deputy Elstrom, I'm researching the possibility of a municipal court for Depot Bay. And so I'm interested in the kinds of fines that can be generated.
Right, I have spoken about it before.
In my research, I found, for example, and this is an apples' knowledge comparison, but Newport generated $110 million through a municipal court last year. So I wanted to ask you, what is the typical, or say an average fine for speeding, say doing 55 and a 50 in a 35 zone, for example?
So it's, in order, we have different levels. We have A through D. D is 115. C is 165. B is 265 and then A is 440, then there's some special violations. If someone's driving 400 miles an hour per se, that's headed over $1,000. I have a cop out in that in a little bit, or maybe someday.
Parking fine, what would you?
Parking fine would be a class B, so that'd be 115.
Mayor, I just want to note that our deputy delivered one, here, 134 citations and warnings.
No, it wouldn't be 100 more citations.
Well, no, not citations and warnings, 13 citations and 104 traffic warnings. 134 stops. And if we had averaged, actually, we're giving out a, a ticket with a fine at $100, I believe that would come out to about $160,800 a year, which would pay for our deputy here. So that's something to consider. Mayor, thank you.
Are you, pardon me, council, are you calculating the whole inheritance coming to us?
I'm, I'm just saying, if we, if we brought in an average of $100 per ticket into this city for us and that, and that's lower than the, the fines that are issued that would pay for our deputy.
Because we would have all these extra costs for Because we would have all these extra costs for court, we would have to hire a judge, clerks, you know, all of this stuff. So I think that's a good start on it, but it wouldn't pay for this time. It would cause extra costs.
Yes.
Something to think about, so we'd have to weigh into that aspect as well. But if the council wishes, I can talk to some of the managers of the municipal courts and get some dollars and cents for you.
Hi. My first name is.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, continue on with my little private recent question, okay?
I have a question.
Okay.
Oh. Do you ever chat with folks that are crossing one on one illegally? And there's always a lot of stuff about drivers and that stuff.
When they're close, when they're close to me, yes. When I see it happening far away, it's impossible for me to drive down to them, block traffic, get in my car, and they're talking to me because
Because you're really big.
It creates more of a hazard.
Okay.
There's been problems with multiple times while I'm sitting on the sea wall that long with lit crosswalks or flashing light crosswalks.
Oh, yeah.
Still a common thing I would talk about as a colleague, it's still an absolutely common thing.
Yes, council.
Um, so what is the difference between the hundred and sixty five incidences and only the hundred and seventeen that are reported above? What are the other incidences that are there if they're not?
So those would be welfare checks, thefts, burglaries, missing properties, just different types of calls. The the bulk of my calls here will not call itself generated or traffic stops. So that's the bulk number. The rest of those that you're not seeing on there is everything else that I did with it. Might be a nine on one call of some sort. If that makes sense to you.
Yeah. And then the the other question that I have is, do, and this is just a general question to the council and staff, is the terms of our contract with the sheriff's department, it looks like we've got a hundred and twenty one hours that we've worked in the month of May, or sorry, this is April. And are we not staffing full time at a hundred and sixty hours? And so if if we take the eighty one hours plus these forty hours of our time off and training hours, that's only a hundred and twenty one hours of of the hundred and sixty, which would normally occur on.
But it doesn't include a sick vacation, that holidays, all that stuff that factors into that time.
You just have to.
That's also what I that's what I was also talking about with my contract supervisor, Sergeant Vale. When I'm gone, he makes his best effort to fill in. And that's what we're not seeing on this sheet, but going forward. When someone is filling in while I'm on vacation at training, say, whatever, maybe that will be on, which is not on this right now.
We have had deputies fill in on vacation. They've come in here, I've asked them to start coming in at, you know, when they're so I can say, yes, maybe he was on vacation or he was at Purdue, but we have deputy so and so in here.
And it's all trackable and same or any, we base off GPS boundaries essentially. So all of that is going to be GPS tracked essentially.
I just have a quick question. It seems like my observation, most of the problems are early in the morning, between seven to nine, people in fifty miles an hour.
Absolutely.
Is that technically when you start, or are we already?
I do try and, there are days where I need to be in the court for whatever reason for our reasons. I try and beat your head, so I'm sitting on sea wall, and I can video record and throw everything. That's, I would say, eight percent timeline here in mornings, probably not actually, but that is that as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deputy. Oh, great. We have North Lincoln Sanitary Service to speak. Come on up.
Did you have a quick meeting up on the screen for your presentation?
We make it ready for you. I have on my laptop, so I can start.
I do want to say that Lexi has been a godsend with what she's about to talk to her about. I say, you just tell me what I can do because I can't study this.
I like that. The best way to do it. I'm Lexi Hall, I'm working for Lincoln Sanitary Service, and I am our, I don't know my title. I think today I'm our outreach and education recycling guru, that's all I'm coming from. Uh, while she's pulling up the slide, we are going to be talking about the Recycling Modernization Act. And actually, you've been a big part of this on our Slack. Uh, and Kimberly, are you able to?
Just started today.
Yeah. And it is RMA, is a pretty big lift. We'll kind of start with RMA one on one today. And then at the end, I will talk a little bit about how far into the process we are. All in all, nothing starts a hundred percent until July of twenty twenty five, so we do have a little bit of time. Oh, Mom, they have it. Oh.
Oh, yeah. This is for you guys.
Very nice. Appreciate it. Can't wait to see this again. Yeah. Okay, so moving to the next slide, please.
Oh, you wanted to do a slide? Hang on a second, I'm sorry, it's apparently.
Is it a PDF? You can just go now.
Just, just. Don't mind that.
Oh, wow, it's all wonky.
Yes, let me, let me get rid of that and stop sharing and actually share the presentation in PDF. I mean, it's.
Unfortunately. For some reason, our font shows up really wonky, so it may not be very pretty.
Probably not.
Pretty on my screen.
Probably our crazy system. You can have some upside issues. It's been upgraded.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Share. Oh, that's good.
Oh, there's all my resumes.
No, don't worry, I'll get it just. I'll get started. There we go.
Yay, okay, so next slide. Um, okay, so you're probably asking yourselves, what in the world are you talking about? This Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act, we're going to call it RMA. So in twenty twenty one, Senate Bill five eighty two passed, and the new law became effective in January of twenty twenty two. Since January of twenty twenty two, we at Lincoln Sanitary and all the haulers in the state, really, alongside some local government and the DEQ, have been really hard at work to be ready for the changes that will start in July of twenty twenty five. Uh, this law will start updating Oregon's recycling system by leveraging product producers' resources. So a product producer is a company who manufactures a product or product packaging on the Universal Statewide Collection List. And right now, I'm going to start apologizing because you're going to hear acronyms and you're going to hate me by the end of this because I made it. So the Universal Statewide Collection List, we're going to call that the USCL. I'll keep repeating myself and we'll talk about it later. But these product producers are examples of Coca-Cola, Amazon, Clorox Company, all those big guys that are making those products. And those people will join a producer responsibility organization, a PRO, if you will. And they will pay fees to the PRO based on the products that they sell in Oregon. So to wrap your mind around it, it's very similar to what they've done with electronics. They've done electronics extender producer responder responsibility. Oh, those acronyms. And same thing with paints, they do that with paint as well. So there's going to be an increase on the products most likely in order to pay for the end result of making sure that these products are recyclable. So those PROs, again, the producer responsibility organizations, will use the fees that they're being paid by the producers, and they will reimburse various local recycling service expenses. And so they've been in contact with local government in order to also work with the service providers to make all of this happen. So the local governments will receive the financial support. They can say that their hauler will receive the financial support, but it first it goes to the local government. And that will expand recycling services and address contamination in recycling. So the updates to the system will hopefully make recycling easy for the public because I know that it's been confusing these last few years with all the changes. And hopefully expand access to recycling, upgrade facilities that sort recyclables, and create environmental benefits. So now that we know the changes are coming, the question should be, how should we prepare? So you should have received some information in your packets regarding these items. A few of the simple ways to prepare, and again, maybe it's just a couple of you. I know Lincoln City and Lincoln County have a couple of people from their council that are focusing on this and then working with us as the hauler to kind of honestly team up because it's just, it's a lot of work. So sign up for text or emails, uh, updates via mail delivery, and that, there's a little link to that, but I can also email it to you if there's a smaller group. There's a webinar for local governments that's really helpful. And actually, yesterday or the day before, I didn't get a chance to update you, but there was another webinar sent out by DEQ that actually is a more condensed version that's way better. So I'll send that out as well. Uh, read the frequently asked questions from the March twenty twenty four webinar. Read the local government brochure from DEQ, read city and county responsibilities. But most of all, be ready to receive contact from, here we go, another acronym, Resource Recycling Systems, RRS, to complete phase two of the needs assessment that you filled out in April of twenty twenty three. So we worked with you guys to fill out the first needs assessment regarding the RMA. And honestly, I would say, oh, go back and take a look at that. But we just said yes to everything when they asked, what do you want? Because we knew that today, there would be a day where we would want to say, actually, here's the things that we do want. And if we didn't say yes to everything, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do what we're doing now. So that phase two version is called the Oregon Recycling System Optimization Project, ORSOP. And the PRO, again, that responsibility organization that is receiving the funds, they are Circular Action Alliance, that's the company name, CAA. And they're contracting with Resource Recycling Systems to reach out to local government to complete this phase two ORSOP giant questionnaire. And so they sent it to local governments because there are some local governments, especially in the metro area, that have solid waste advisors that are, that have this data. However, ninety nine percent outside of metro area are not going to have the data, we are. And so what we've done is we've actually made it through one of the questionnaires. We're not all the way through Deco Bay yet, but we're working our way through and just, it's just data. It's how many routes do you have, how many customers do you have, how many carts do you have, what kind of carts do you have, what kind of trucks do you have, how much tonnage, like the most detailed you could ever be.
Yeah, it's sort of to be announced and to remain to help.
It's to help. Awesome. Exactly what we want. So pretty much, as soon as RRS, CAA, DEQ, anybody reaches out to you guys, reach out to us, and then we'll partner together to figure it out. Next up, this is kind of exciting. So one big change that you guys are going to see that really isn't going to be as much backend as the stuff I'm talking about is the Universal Statewide Collection List, USCL, very fun. So this is a list of recyclable items that every hauler will be required to collect unless the city is under the population size of four thousand. So Deco Bay falls under that. But good news is, because we're going to be doing it for the rest of our customers that are, or the municipalities that are over four thousand, we're going to loop you guys right in, and we're going to make sure that you get everything on the USCL, just like everyone else. So this picture is actually an example, and I put giant draft because although there is a lot of statutory language within RMA that is what it is, and it's not going to be changed unless it gets opened up again. The USCL is still being decided on. Some of the biggest changes that most likely will go through are milk cartons and aseptic cartons will be accepted in the curbside again. And then garden, uh, planter, what are those called?
Nursery pots.
Thank you, appreciate that. Five gallon buckets, and then those storage containers are all made of a specific type of plastic. They're bulky, which could be a problem, but they are recyclable, which is great. Another change you'll see on there is pots and pans. That one is still being decided on because they are so heavy when they go to the material recovery facility. Sometimes they cause issues, so that one's getting worked out. All that said, all of these items are required to go to a responsible end market through the RMA. And so anywhere you go in Oregon, unless it's a tiny hometown under four thousand, right, most likely you're going to see the same set of recyclable items all over, which is incredible. I think that's a huge step in the right direction. Next slide.
I just want to ask you a question.
Yes.
So, um, there is a lot of literature out there that actually looks at, you know, oh, yeah, you put them in the commingos, recyclable, and then it doesn't really ever get recycled. What is the end guarantee through all this? That whatever goes into these uniform products will actually be recycled.
Going, right, please? Yeah, so that was one of the big parts of RMA was after the twenty eighteen national sword issue where we found out that China was dumping a lot of our recyclables either in the ocean or just put them in the garbage heap, which was horrible. People really pared down what they were willing to send and really pared down where they were willing to send it, right? And so for us, we made sure that everything was staying within the United States. It it made it a lot easier to follow the trail, right? So with RMA, there are going to be requirements for where those MRFs, the material processing facilities that we take your curbside recycling to, they have to have a permit through DEQ now. Similar, actually, to how we're regulated with local government, they'll be regulated through DEQ. And their end markets all have to have, there's crazy requirements, actually. So it's exciting that it's, it's going to be followed. And I think that's why there is so much turmoil over the USCL is because every item on there has to have a place to go. And so if you're putting something on there, you don't want to take it away later like we did. So that's why that has the draft, because don't share that. I don't have it.
Did that answer?
Yeah, thank you very. So the requirements for local governments under four thousand are different than those over. However, because North Lincoln Sanitary does service Lincoln City and the county, you guys will fall under a lot of what we're doing for them anyways. So this is just what you're required to do as local government. So disposal sites are required to collect materials on the USCL. An example of a disposal site would be our Skidmore Creek Transport Station or Recycling Depot. We already do that, so that will just fall in really easily. The next one is going to be that you ensure recycling collected is sent to a DEQ, a curbside recovery facility. And then an example of a processor like this would be Pioneer Recyclings, where we send in clarkness organ. And they are, they've been a part of all these RMA conversations, which is great. You are not allowed to collect any materials outside of the USCL. So if we said, we want to collect styrofoam curbside, you can't do that, it has to be on the USCL. And then lastly, you have to order and use roll cards with at least ten percent verified post-consumer recycled content, AKA, it has to be from when you put something, your plastic bottle, that has to go and be recycled and then put into a roll card, that already is happening. So really, we're, we're going to be in compliance with all the stuff that you guys as a city are required to do already. It will be exciting to see what more could be available. So next one. How should you prepare? Where's my paper? So, um, these are the types of funding that the cities under four thousand are allowed to have. So the first is contamin, oh, wait, this is not. Seventh slide, next slide.
Excellent.
Funding for implementing RMA, there we go. So the first step is to refamiliarize yourself with that local government needs assessment that we did in April twenty twenty three. Like I said, you kind of just said yes to all of that. So really, all you need to know is that you did fill it out, you said yes to everything, so now we can move on to phase two of the ORSOP. You need to be ready for information from DEQ, including those videos and documents explaining the program from A to Z. Like I said, she, Cat Rhodes with DEQ is amazing, she's on all of her ORSOP meetings now. And she just sent out a big video that I'll send to you guys. And then lastly, work with us to come up with a plan to manage any funds that we do receive. And you will actually be asked to make a decision on this soon by DEQ. I believe they're sending it in December, and then you have to decide by June of next year. But then I've heard summer, and you decide by summer, so just look for the email and then we'll go from there. Okay, next slide. Now I want to see. Okay, so there are three types of funding for cities under four thousand. The first is contamination education and programming. Second is transportation expenses, and the third is expansion of services. So there's going to be money available to help establish or expand depot services for the PRO list of items, which is different from the USCL and is still being decided on. So a couple of examples are styrofoam, that's on the PRO depot list. And styrofoam is a very hard to recycle and hard to handle material. So the PROs are going to have an extra pot of money to try to figure out how to recycle items like that. So if you guys decided at Deco Bay right now, actually, right to the left of that photo, we have a glass depot. And so if you decided, okay, we want a full time manned depot for this PRO material. we could potentially get funding, um, to have that. So that's an idea. Um, this may take substantial funds because many depots are not set up to take light when one item's like styrofoam. And depots in communities on the PRO list will be funded first. So for example, glass is not currently on the list. So starting another glass depot from scratch may be seen as more optional by the PRO than something else that's already on the list like styrofoam. Um, we have been told that qualifying projects will get funded at some point, but those in the back of the line might not see any money until later in the first plan period, which ends around twenty twenty seven. But like I said, this is kind of a long game. Like we're still even a year out from it starting, but we wanna make sure that you guys are aware of what's going on. Um, the priority list will be adding curbside or depot collection in areas that are lacking service now. So thankfully, you guys are not one of those. And then cities over four thousand will be considered and then cities under four thousand in rural areas will be considered. Next slide. Okay, so what does all this mean? It's very crazy with all these acronyms. Uh, we're, we're here for you guys. I, I tried to make that really clear and I hope that it's come across. So we have most of this data anyways. We want to take care of you. We do the opportunity recycle report for cities over four thousand. Um, we do all the education on our, and so we just, we wanna take this in stride and continue that. Um, so please, if you guys have any questions, any concerns really, I, that's what I'm here for. It's kind of become my full-time job. So, any questions? Amazing.
And she'll be at the Juneteenth event, right?
Yeah, I know, it's awesome. I'm excited. I got my dad to join me. So he's gonna talk about all the fun things. I just talk about the not as much things.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll look forward to hearing from DEQ.
Yeah, there you go. That's exactly what I'm gonna happen.
Thank you, Lexi.
Thank you.
Good presentation. All right, moving on to our committee reports.
Okay, first, we're having the Juneteenth event. This Saturday, it's a massive event. You guys see, um, how we'll be there. Um, we've sent out platters, um, we've, um, social media, the city website just came to advise for this. I hope that we have turnout that we did to January three twenty three because that was very successful. Uh, so it's a, a big deal. We're looking forward to that, educate the, the citizens of Deco Bay. What we're doing is a committee, what our plans are. Um, the other thing to mention, um, we do have a resignation from our committee. Chris Berry is resigning as of July the first. Um, she's just, has a real busy, busy schedule right now. And if anyone knows of anyone that would like to be considered for emergency preparing this committee, we'd love to, um, hear about it. And then the other thing that we have, um, on the fourteenth, we're gonna have a small group to go to the Hatfield Science Center to look at their caches and hopefully learn something about what they do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Um, Harper, I think Jack loved.
Um, uh, Jack asked me to pass along, he had to wait, but he asked me to pass along that. Um, he didn't have anything except to say that at the next meeting, the end of this month, they're going to tackle guide boats. Uh, we've been having some concerns and, and experiencing and hearing some concerns. So we're gonna get, and talk about that, the recognition plans to address that.
Okay. Can I ask a question that we could add to the agenda perhaps? I'm concerned about the number of whale watching boats that are already, you know, you'll have one whale, seven or eight boats around it, which doesn't happen anywhere else in the world that I know of. They're usually restricted to three. And so if any of these other boats come in, charter, not efficient charters, but they could be whale watch charters. I think I'd love the harbor commission to start talking about how we protect our whales from internal, but then internal charter fleet, but also external. It's, um, it's can, can be a real problem when there's very few whales left this year. And it's been documented by OSU researchers that when there's a lot of boats around, ten percent less feeding when the whales were started, that's significant. So if that's, I don't know if that's a harbor commission task, but.
I think definitely, I think the first thing we have to find out is if we can regulate ocean, you know, what happens on the ocean. We can regulate what comes out of a harbor, but I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure we're regulating, but it certainly would be nice to have agreements between the fleet and, you know, about how many boats should be around the whale.
Right, if we can work together to get that agreement, but that may, might be contrary to their business. So I can see some challenges with that, but let me do some investigation and we can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't, we don't have any money, so.
Yeah.
I don't see you when planning parks.
Uh, you have a planning liaison report, so that was kind of their report from the month.
Oh, thanks. Come on up, Robert.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Robert Vincent, Parks and Rec Commission. A few things, as I'm chatting here, I wanna pass out, we're doing a pet ploosa. And we wanna get you all involved. We're gonna be having partrays. No, fun intended, hot dogs, hamburgers, agility contests, all kinds of different things. The park only wants to get the community involved with is well of our four-legged family. There're gonna be especially a fun one with the pet owner book-a-lot contest. That's gonna be interesting. And just a lot of prizes, just a fun night. Outside of that, we're gonna be doing more items, more things happening with, um, we're working on a local group now who actually do ivy pulling. Not only is it good for thinning things out, but it's also a good exercise, just throw that in. So ivy and lickers, we're gonna be thinning them out, helping along with the staff. And the volunteer, we're looking for the salmon flipping, thing clipping, uh, thirteenth of, of July. And of course, the big event we did last year for the first time was the First Annual National Light Out. It was quite a success. We had a great time and we expect to expand upon that and just had a great time. You know, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Also, we're looking for volunteers for movie nights, you know, in the park. And the city and park cleanup days throughout, so we're just trying to get volunteers from every aspect and on committees and get the city really involved and again, keep it citizen, city front organizations and parties. Questions? Okay. You mentioned fin clipping on July thirteenth, this event the fourteenth, I.
They told me it was the thirteenth.
It's a Saturday.
Right.
I think it's the thirteenth. Is it?
I'm looking.
Okay. And then the other question is.
It's because you've been out of town, Thursday.
What, what are you, what are you doing with that?
Whatever you need. They wanna help. They wanna be volunteers or help with their town. They don't know that much about it. Everyone's pretty new, except for Kenny, who's now, but they wanna help.
A little scheduled meeting. Yes, join us as well, join our parks meeting and explain what's going on with us. You guys more joint memberships, different meetings. Yes, please.
Um, anyone think on the Senate?
That is not my purview. That's pretty much the, all about the chamber and I, I don't, I don't have any feelings with any of that.
That's not part of their, that was reviewed specifically from their, no, but it's, so it's not under their purview at all.
I, I mean, honestly, I've heard nothing from anyone. There were calls made and there was no return, so.
Thanks.
Counsel, please.
Chairman, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I, I noticed down here that you're gonna have donations for events with proceeds to the Lincoln County Animal Shelter. I am hoping that you will continue to think about, uh, raising money at events like this and, and possibly for parks projects in Deco Bay. I'm interested in seeing adult, for example, uh, adult play, uh, adult exercise equipment.
Yeah, there was, we had a network.
Uh, and, uh, it, and I actually proposed that at a budget meeting and I, and I failed to even think about where the money would come from. But it, it occurs to me that what we do need to do is, is raise some money for that park so that we can get these additional benefits down there.
We actually talked about this during the parks meeting, that to get the apparatus from actually out there looking for prices and what have you, and then ways to actually hit the dollars to implement towards this project.
Thanks for thinking about that.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you guys so much.
So Sam, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Sam, did you have anything to say to me?
No.
They're here for, they're here for his moral support.
Moral support, I'd like.
Just about the salmon.
Hey.
Beanie, are you here for salmon?
I am.
You can't correct that.
Ken should be the one for salmon because he and Dennis Tang are the ones that have been taking care of it.
I wanna hear about kids. That's gonna go.
So tomorrow is the fourth trip for the neighbors for kids. You know, I think that's the last one of the year as far as I know.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you.
Um, Sam, is there a last one for you here?
Uh, Beanie, I think we've got, uh, I think we've got one more. We've already, we're into it. We have two we've done already and I think that, I think we have two more.
Oh, okay.
We have this one on the fifth and one on the seventeenth, excuse me, on the twelfth. Uh, whatever, we don't have a calendar from.
What time you guys will be up there on this? I'm thinking about tomorrow.
The kids will be up there at three o'clock.
Yeah, that, we're doing the watershed tour at three o'clock, so we might be up there. We're doing it at one or one thirty, one thirty, right? Councilback, one thirty?
Yeah.
So we may be up there and I may get to see them after all.
But, um, or Beanie, I'll be, but are you gonna be tomorrow?
I, I am here tonight because I was gonna be there tomorrow.
Okay, you're down there half hours. Half hour early, opening gates up and everything for the kids and.
I should be hurt to Ken because like I said, he and Dennis are the ones that have been taking care of the things. And we do plan on scheduling some kind of meeting at the tail end of June to get ourselves organized. I think that for the parks, I'm gonna, and appreciate the enthusiasm there. One of the things that always throws up the flag to me is it's in the city's watershed. It is, um, you know, usually there's about fifty or sixty people that kind of attend. If you get too big of a volume there, it is not manageable. So I mean, you have to be
thoughtful.
Thoughtful and careful and, you know, and the attendance to get everybody up there. Some kind of visitors can leave and, and whatever. But, uh, large volume of people up there will create some problems. And with that said, I spoke to Paul over here a while back, you know, the lower end of that, uh, road where the, the stream dumps the culvert, you get some gravel in there, salmon, and have some, and see if they get some volunteers, get in there and get some gravel, things like that. Do you have any other thing, Ken?
No, the, Beanie's right, there's not a lot of room up there for, for, well, we all, we all know that, no.
In the, in the past, we've encouraged people to park at the gate or parking lot and get a shovel. Uh, and from the last culvert, I have to really refrain them having any cavers up there.
Sure.
But we'll make it work, you know, and it's an important part to the city and, and everyone.
Have two parts.
Pardon?
Part A, part B. So one group comes in the morning, one group comes later.
We've done things like that sometimes. And it is an idea, but, uh, it isn't exactly like you're assigned part A or part B. We did that during COVID.
Oh.
And it worked out all right. As far as we know, the fish are still there, going. Just positive, but, and then we'll get everybody involved and just participating. There might be seventeen thousand fish.
That's awesome. That's fast.
Well, if things get going, we can do thirty-five, thirty-four thousand fish an hour.
That many fish.
These fish will be smaller this year. Paul's wife, she is ten foot since gay wedding. When their daughter was fifteen, they ate it.
I think otters are not eating fish.
Uh, Gaddis City has not seen them. They're up there for, they, they're just doing otter things in the watershed, cruising through.
I think the success is quite, quite good.
I, from what I've seen in past numbers and it's actually pretty awesome.
Yeah, I, I thought this was gonna be the last one. Anyway, that, that's why I scheduled to be up there tomorrow. And it's been very difficult for me to be home anytime during the days.
Beanie, what time is the fin clipping?
What, pardon?
What time is the fin clipping?
Uh, we usually start at nine. I mean, there's a setup and the volunteers will set up uh, things in the eighty-four and then usually the fin clipping is where it starts and the last one.
And you're saying you don't think more than fifty or sixty people?
We've had fifty and sixty people up there. But it has to be managed. If you, if we had a hundred up there, there would be some difficult problems.
Will that depend on the weather? Like if it's like this, we get fifty to sixty people.
The, the the fish don't seem to mind to get wet, but the, uh, uh, those people that want to fit clip teams, they, it, it's not bad weather, it's bad clothing. They're there.
Cool. I have wet weather, you already.
Anyway, again, I've been pretty out, so volunteers have been carrying a load.
Wonderful. Any other questions for Beanie?
Would it be helpful if people signed up so you knew how many people were coming or?
I'll stand at the gate and block people.
I, I know some, there are people that are scheduled, constantly people out of town. I don't know about Santa Polly. You're familiar with all this, whether.
I think signing up could be difficult because you're planning on this group of people to show up and only half of them show up, but then you, you've got all these open spots that should be filled, but nobody's there. That happens. People said they're gonna be there, everything is filling up.
Yeah.
I think we have like a monitor at the gate, um, standing and counting people and then talking.
There's a sign-up sheet at the top. I, I don't know. We're just gonna go forward with this and we'll learn from this one.
Okay.
You know, and that's what you do. We have a hundred people up there. It's good and we'll figure out, okay, well, we only need ninety-five. Very good.
I think we gotta run down the no-shows.
Really hot calls.
They're trying to have.
And of course, I, obviously the best thing up there is beating the kids high life.
I just wanna see the kids with fish doing the fin clipping.
And, and you, you were saying you're doing the watershed?
Yeah, we're, um, uh, the, uh, DEQ folks and a couple of folks were gonna go take a tour of, uh,
not all of the watershed, a portion of the watershed. Do you know what they're thinking?
No, I was gonna ask, you know, have keys to the gate?
Yeah, we have, so, um, the idea is because part of that land conservation and working with the DEQ folks about, um, watershed protection and conservation easements and stuff like that. And we got several people coming and they're gonna meet us at Seahull one thirty tomorrow, so.
Well, thank you.
All right. Well, I guess we'll see you again sometime. Do we have any public comments this evening? Public comments? Okay, let's move on to the water ordinance. Um, has everyone had a chance to review everything that can put together for?
Can I just take it live for a long second? So this has come up, I realize this has come up before. We talked about what kind of options can we can, can we do to assist people. It's, it seems to be a prevalent thought is, well, we have people experiencing hardships, you know, what kind of assistance? So the last time we kinda didn't do anything more with this because everybody was looking and thinking low income. There are hardship programs, there are low-income programs, but they're all the same thing. All helping people who are struggling with. All helping people who are struggling with paying their bills. There are different programs. There's ones where you can see like the city of Newport, where you have to follow these particular things. They look at new EBITDA income and everything like that. Um, there's other programs where you have to, you have to qualify for, you have to be getting food stamps or things like that. So really, it's really up to the council to decide what they want me to say when I, oh, so let me go back to this. I just gave you guys this tonight. This is a rough draft from a former co-chair for the hardship kind of waiver. It was, uh, based on a D waiver. And, um, we're just not really saying anything except saying that you have options. Which is what I think you want, is you wanted to tell people that they have options. An option is a payment plan, which we've always offered. An option may be something else. It's the something else I wanna understand where you're coming from. Council Rec had mentioned partial or full waiver of the bill. You know, what, or delay deferred, maybe deferred like, uh, for example, um, during COVID, a lot of these utility companies, um, you could sign up for a deferral and you wouldn't have to pay for like anything for a couple of months, you know? Um, things like that. So there is as many options as the council would like to consider when you're talking about what kind of relief and hardship, what hardship looks like and what the benefit looks like.
Yes, so, um, what I was suggesting was that, um, not to create our own ordinance or, but I thought that there were some existing programs that Diana, um, Diana.
Uh, Jenny.
Jenny, um, said that she referred people to.
She absolutely does and CSC was one of them. They still take it. Apparently, that, that means she definitely has some.
The information I thought that I was more interested in, not somebody else's ordinance, like what programs are out there? CSC, maybe the PUD has, you know, hardships themselves that they.
Okay, PUD for energy.
Yes, and, um, water, you know, uh, well, I think.
I've had Angels Anonymous.
I didn't find anything on Angels Anonymous yet, but I found there is some federal programs. So we can put all this stuff on the website and handout, we can have a handout. But I think what I was hearing from you guys is you wanna allow hardships. We give people hard, for them to say, I got a problem making a payment.
So, um, I think at the end of last meeting, we were drawing a distinction between what is a hardship versus what is a late fee.
Right, and late fees are off the table.
And so we're, we're no longer concerned about late fees. You guys just charge a late fee and figure out what's going on in the working and what are mine. The hardship side of it is a much more difficult conversation. Because we, you know, we're, we're getting ready here in July to increase rates again. And I suspect that, um, the number of calls that you're gonna get and the number of people who are gonna start fitting into this hardship category are gonna increase because of the increased fees. And so I think it's, it's important for us as a council to give them options. And what I, what I believe you sent to us was what a lot of other municipalities are doing. And I think in a lot of cases, those are self-funding types of activities where people with hardships can apply for what would basically be a city grant of some kind that says, you know, what.
That often comes out of utility fees.
We're going to, we're going to offer a, an amount out of utility fees to cover some of these patrons who just are not gonna be able to pay. And, and we haven't done that and I don't think, I don't think there's been enough labor done to, for us to be able to step in and, and do that at this point. But I, I believe that we need to be looking at that and we need to consider something of that nature because, um, the, the rates that we're charging are, they're, they're becoming pretty substantial.
Yeah.
And they're going to get worse and worse and worse. And so I just, I think we're, I mean, it's great. We need to do the information sheet and we need to give people as much information as possible where they can get help. But I think that we as a, as a city and as an organization need to come up with, what is our plan? And where are we going to, um, go with, with, uh, perhaps even a self-funded kind of hardship type of, of, of a program?
And, and like council myself, and that's what this paperwork is, and that's what I did with you before. It is how other cities are handling this same issue. They all, they do it different though. Everybody does it different and it's funded differently. Some people work with CSC to, like, for example, I think it's the city of Albany, ma, has CSC management program. They have an application and, or they have contact with CSC and CSC handles it. But CSC has very specific guidelines, maybe we don't want that stringent guidelines. So really, I can put together, if we wanna use this as a work session discussion, some proposals on what you can say. But it's really, the sky's the limit. What does the council want to offer people? And that's wide range.
I have a question. But first, let me say, I, I love your language in here where you say waivers are not granted lightly. And I'm wondering who's gonna be saying that to people when they come in because you have such a bright smiling staff. It's hard to imagine somebody saying, well, we're not granting this lightly.
Jenny has been very tough and nobody gets mad at her because she's really stupid.
That's, that's nice to hear. Now, this is, the other cities, uh, that's a, this is a one-time thing that they offer, right?
A lot of them want the one-time, but a lot of them, you can, a lot of them, so, some of them say, okay, annually. Like say for example, January, you have to apply to get reductions. Like you have to apply and show your income levels in various different conditions. And you have to do whatever you, so you get a reduction on your water utility bills, okay? But you have to apply every year. Others, you apply at that time. They, some say you only get one, others say you get four. So again, really what the council, what me depot Bay want to offer.
Can I have a question? Um, I, I wonder if people have been educated about how to reduce their, their electricity bill? Then they have an extra fridge around, blood under their, their water, something like that.
It's water that we're looking for.
It's water, well, it's not different.
We can, we can provide more educational material on water conservation. Um, and that might help. But it's not going to help people who truly experience the hardship. But it's not about how much water they use, it's about whether they can pay it at all.
Well, I think it's in all of our interests not to have people, you know, out on the street. So, um, and if we're gonna do it, we don't have a policy now, but we can budget for it now. And, um, so we'll have something in the budget for when we do have a policy. And then.
Can we draft something else? So, one city, and I don't think everybody here says that they have fifty thousand a year. First come, first served. Once that money's gone, the money's gone.
Yeah, we have an option to.
So that's an option to.
Know that we have first come, first served, we have.
We have everybody come at once.
Yeah, but they have, they have specific criteria to meet. We don't just say the first five people come, they get it. We say the first five people come, you have to meet this, this, and this criteria. And if you need it, yeah, you get it. But if you don't need it, you don't apply. So we, we wouldn't just wanna say, oh, we got fifty thousand, just come on, come, come on, come on. We would wanna set requirements. And again, what would those look like? What do you guys want people to show that they have hardship?
So, um, what are, what are you asking us to do here tonight? I mean, we've got an ordinance here that's in front of us that has basically said we're no longer gonna, um, allow for a waiver for late fees. Isn't that what you originally came in council asking for?
That's what I originally wanted, yes.
So that's, that's item D in the, the ordinance here. The rest of these things about hardships and those kinds of things, they were all part of the original ordinance anyway, right? You were still going to.
No, no. The hardships were never part of the original bill of water ordinance. We put down there as an option saying that you could only get, I think I put on here that you could get, um, one waiver, one late fee waiver a year. But it could, it could be, we, they hadn't asked what it was for, but it couldn't be for mail. But you got one a year. But you questioned whether or not we should do one a year. That kicked it into more of a hardship issue, which is a very different thing than a late fee.
Than late fees, agreed one hundred percent. So they, really what we're approving here is your item number D that just basically says you're, you're not gonna allow them to or waive their, their late fees because of mail.
And then the, uh, section one has some longer days before it not changed.
Yes, that's a good idea. That's a big problem, I do love.
Um, we still need to fix the due date, um, in section B, because we don't do each month.
Oh, I think I, I feel like I fixed it.
Um, well, the version of the due dates, that's still there.
Ah, I swear, I swear, counselor, I fixed it.
And then are we still on the road of emergency declaration? Because we're.
I agree with that too.
Um, that's down on the bottom, whereas, um, in the whereas section.
It's not in emergency declaration. You fixed that on the first one, you just did a first reading. So this could be a second reading, um, by title only and then come back later for adoption. Or it could be what we generally do, which is a second reading and adoption. I've fixed all this.
Um, it's right above, it's in the, page, page eighty-eight.
Oh, did I forget to take out the title?
Whereas the adoption of this ordinance is necessary for more of the piece.
Yeah, that's my fault. I took it out of the bottom, but I forgot to take out the top. Fascinating fix.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with, with not waiving the, the late fee. And I think that it's a good idea to go to, to go to some kind of a workshop or something to discuss it, what and how we wanna deal with hardship in the future.
Okay, so should we go forward with the second reading of ordinance number blank, blank, dash, twenty-four? In accordance of the city of depot bay, Oregon amending chapter fifty-one water, the code of ordinances of the city of depot bay, Oregon, and adding a new billing policy section.
With the removal of that whereas statement.
Okay. And then monthly, um.
Second reading. Okay, I need a motion to ex- separating it, uh, by title only. Just be, somebody needs.
Another motion. It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved to second to re- ordinance, uh, amending chapter fifty-one by title only. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So section two B has to be every other month to.
Right, right.
Okay, you're putting that.
With the amendments.
Yeah, and then we're gonna go to.
Oh, see, I, I favor to wait five months later.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All righty.
We'll make those changes then, can we?
It's just to move it out, so. Okay. Uh, that was a second reading. Yeah. Do we, are we doing the adoption of it the next time?
Can we adopt it now?
That's up to you guys, sure.
I think we can adopt it now.
Okay.
Do we, yeah, I'll need, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as right into the record?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved to second to adopt an ordinance of the city of depot bay, Oregon amending chapter fifty-one water of the code of ordinances of the city of depot bay, Oregon, and adding a new billing policy section. So any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All righty.
Under new business, um, I asked Kim to, let's get started on the charter review, uh, update and, and form a task force. So, um, probably we need to make it public that this is what we're doing. Set along some parameters of what would be required. Um, and I'll help with that, uh, looking it up on the LOC website, uh, because they have sample, charter review, uh, or suggestions and that type of thing.
Uh, I, I love that it's on the, um, agenda and it was set on the task force. And, um, um, I was just at a meeting about water planning, the DEQ folks there. They had all these examples of all these up to a hundred thousand dollar wastewater and, um, uh, drinking water loans. And it's like a hundred percent forgivable, so a hundred thousand dollars, but we can't have loans. So as soon as our charter can be amended, we can then.
Go forward with these type of things, yeah.
Go forward. Yeah, but I.
Get into the twentieth century here.
Yeah, that would be, be great.
So we'll, we'll work on that.
Twenty-first. Twenty-first, twenty-second.
No, excuse me, we can't, we can't, we can't get loans, but we can get bonds, right? I mean, I, I don't understand the difference between bonds and loans.
Well, this is, it's a, it's a, um, DEQ program that only provides loans, but we can't have any debt.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Because charter doesn't allow it.
And a bond is, is a bogey bond issued by the, the city or the residents.
So this, this would be the city's ability to go out and borrow money, the city council affirming that, not the rest, not the voters.
Well, that's up for discussion with the charter adjustments, yes.
Yeah.
Because right now the charter says no.
I agree. Yeah. I could, uh, I don't know what's impelling this. Uh, I think a counselor just brought up, uh, an example. But as I read our charter, I think we've got a very straightforward and, and what looks, what appears to need to be a nice charter. Uh, well thought out. Why, why are we?
Because it's fifty-six years old.
But that, that doesn't necessarily mean that.
It needs to be reviewed to become up to state and government standards. And there's wording in there and actions that have not been amended or, um, reviewed. And so it does take a task force.
Can we get a, can we get a memo to that effect?
Sure.
Or were we violation of state laws?
We're not in violation. We need to amend language that's in the charter that needs to be taken care of, so. And, and just to review the whole thing and hasn't been done.
The League of Oregon City, I didn't intend it because it was for mayor's only, which was really odd that they wouldn't have city managers involved in this type of thing. But it was for mayor's only, but they did send us the presentation, the slides from that. And then if you would like me to send those to you, I would be happy to do that.
Thanks.
Yeah, that would be great. So there is probably an analysis that could use to be updated. But there's also things like, small things like pronouns and titles and cleanup stuff. And a lot of cities undertake that under, from it, like the cities, um, I know that a couple of cities undertook that charter review. Those are pretty easy. Those aren't making substantial changes. They refer to the pronouns like they refer to this. So they took a chance to do a lot of cleanup. Um, I don't know exactly what laws have changed that would require a charter update, but, um, that was a workshop that League of Oregon City gave. I'll send you what I, what I have. Thank you, Kim.
And if we do a charter change, that would go over to other people, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Uh, but pardon me, because you're talking about forming a task force, but I, I wanna make sure the council is all in concurrence with getting that work going. Okay, because it's, I, we need to get stuff together to do it and need to put out for the public to get people to join in. So it's, it's more like more of a work session discussion about what you guys want that task force to look like.
Maybe we should review the, um, the League of Oregon City memo first and our existing charter, you know, and just see how much work it's gonna be. And then have a work session.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
So in other words, you're suggesting that we should get a packet each individual counselor that would contain the charter, the LOC information, memo from the, you know, the city manager.
Well, I don't know if we need a memo from the city manager. Let's just take a look and then we can have a work session to see what else we need to do.
Well, I think a memo stating out, you know, what is, what it is that we're setting out to do would be a good idea to go along with this.
You mean as far as, pardon me, uh, counselor, you mean as far as doing the charter and the whole process?
Well, as far as doing the charter, I mean, you know, what are we, what's the goal? When you give us this material, uh, the LOC stuff and, you know, you know, what is it that we're gonna do?
The LOC, we'll show you the slides from the presentation. There might be reporting available by now, but it would just tell you about some of the provisions they think that, that they would recommend that the cities update. I don't have a recommendation, um, except for some minor things like that and clean up some electrical language and the terminals. Remember, we discussed some of that. Um, so I can definitely put something together on that, but the League of Oregon City's presentation would be more the things that may or should know about.
So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, so what we're, what you're proposing is that we just, um,
We'll get all the information.
Look at the information.
Yes.
And then workshop that information as a, as a council to decide whether we wanted to create a task force to review this and, and come up with a plan.
Yes.
That seems, that seems like a diligent way to approach it if nothing else.
Yep. Sounds good.
Um, you know, we're, we real, without the information of what, what we're even up against, it's hard to decide whether we need to change the charter, huh? So I, I think it's a good idea to look at it.
All righty, um, staff reports. You need, uh, every, the updates, Kim, on that except for the stealing property thing?
Um, I do have, uh, one update just on the audit, since I know Counselor DZ loves to hear about the audit. Um, I, uh, Summer and I have been working together, um, Chad found an emergency, so three of the things that we did last week. But we spoke into two auditing firms and I know for sure we're getting a quote from one. I'm not sure about the other one. Um, the only difference is, is I think the one quote we're getting might be of. Um, the only difference is, is I think the one quote we're getting might be of start sooner. But some of the things we're running up against just FYI is that the court, the fiscal year closes this month. So most of these firms with the clients they already have will be working on this, this audit. So they're telling me that they would not, this one firm we talked to today, would need to be, they might be able to look at some reports and some things starting in December. They're not actually gonna be able to do anything with the audit until January because they'll be working on their current compliance, so. And I'm not surprised at that at all. I'm disappointed because obviously I want somebody sooner. Um, but that's the way you should work. You you get there with the way you can.
Uh, I'm just curious, um how long does, does the CPA think it's gonna be able to take her to be able to get information that an audit firm is even gonna wanna look at?
Well, we had a conversation about that because I've been through five years of audits and I talked to both the CPA and both of the auditors and I talked to them about just stuff to prepare and we talked a little more about that today. I don't foresee, I think we can do a lot of the legwork by simply, the staff has already pulled the records, have already gathered the records. More likely talk about balancing, uh checking the items on the balance sheet, making sure that we have the, the proof, if you will. That stuff we can all do. Um, so and then what's gonna happen is once we get all that ready, then our CPA will come out, take a look what we have, see what else we might need to provide. Um, so it's good that we have some time for her to be able to come out and take a look at what we have. This is hard to put it together, her to come out, but I don't think we're as far behind as it, people seem to think we are as far as, cause the staff that was there have Diane and uh Carla have done a good job pulling the records together, so.
So.
But I I can't give you this cause of my, she can't either, cause she doesn't know until she comes out here. The first one will be our testing ground, if you will, because she needs to see what our records look like, what our reports look like, what everything looks like before she can say it'll only take two months the next time.
So what years are we working on?
Uh, twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three.
So we have records pulled for those years?
Mm-hmm.
And so really it's a matter of generating the financials that go with those.
Right.
Which is what we need the CPA to do before the auditors will ever come in and look.
Absolutely.
Cause the auditors need to have financials.
We need. We can do that. We can, the staff can generate reports.
Correct.
Verify the backup against the reports, making sure that if you say we paid this, we have proof that we paid it.
Correct. The CPA though is gonna generate the financials off of the proof source documents, right? That's what we're hiring her to do.
Okay. We're hiring her to review what we have through our reports, but she's not creating reports. We have reports.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
So she'll be reviewing our data and helping us make sure that what we give to CPAs is clean or where the auditors is clean. So she'll review and say, oh, you need to check this down or find out why this is here, cause I don't think it should be here. So that was what her goal is to do that is to make sure that what we sent and what we have the auditors do will be clean. Now, one auditing firm, one that I think will quote, I really liked, and I think that she, they do everything remotely. So we're not gonna be paying any extra cost for travel and stuff like that. And during COVID, everybody did everything remotely, so it's not a big deal. Um, but anyway, so I'm gonna start working with the group, get with Diane to pull out twenty twenty one again and start going through things. Um, I'm running the reports and double checking the proof and make sure we have everything, so we can say we got everything.
So I have a question for you on this. If your, if our CPA comes in and is able to get in the groove on this, and how can you quickly churn these years out so that we can get beyond this? And my other question is, what about nineteen twenty? Have we seen an audit on that yet?
So not, we did see an audit. You you've gotten the audit.
Okay, but it's not an approved audit.
We are meeting, I'm setting up a meeting with, um I took all the notes that Counselor Rex gave. Um, our CPA is reviewing, their Counselor Rex notes and she's looking at this, so I think I said that she found some things that didn't make any sense. And we're gonna schedule, when she's ready, we're gonna schedule, I mean, probably next week, with Iser to try to get this closed out. Um, the other thing we have to do, she said, we need to meet with our bond counsel. We don't really have a bond counsel. We have the person who built this with our twenty twelve bond, but I'm gonna reach out to them, but the reason she wants to meet with them is all about, and I don't want money to waters. It's all about our ca- our basis of accounting, monopod accrual, accrual cash bases, what do we have to look at statements? So what she said to me today that we actually should talk to our bond counsel first. Um, so Hawkins Delia Wood, which is a very premier bond counsel. I'm gonna reach out to them and say, would you work with depot bay? You get our bond, we'd like to talk to you, our auditor, our CPA would like to talk to you. She, and having heard with these ideas and suggestions and the auditors, she went, I can't, but I did. They're all used to, so far everyone's worked with Summer. They know what she's like, gave plus, so. It was really the, the thing I think she's gonna help us knock back. I cannot, and I don't think she can either, until we get into twenty twenty one and she's gonna be swayed with. She's hoping that while we don't, we, she's not sure we'll have a clean audit and I don't think we will into a current, but she's hoping we don't have one with the disclaimers. The other thing is, is and the disclaimer is very vague on our current one. And the auditors I talked today literally agree it was vague and didn't provide the information that they're supposed to provide, blah, blah, blah. So we'll be working on a couple of things with them and I I hope Iser is willing to um help us out, but.
Um, as I was contemplating this financial report, a couple, another question came up and uh are we using the vision system now and are we replacing that or?
We hope to replace it starting in January. Uh, I turned in all the spreadsheets, got everything updated. I'm just waiting to find out when we're in the queue. And I'm hoping it's by January because the vision support, the current version we have is ended support in depot. So we definitely need to get on board in it by. And I've said before, and I'll still insist on this, the data is in vision. Can't run one report to get it, but you can get it. Just not.
And that's, and that's uh what the CPA is gonna be working on, is the vision system or the data that it produces?
No, I, she will, I think what I'm gonna do, because I know the gentleman, how you can do and how the backend of these systems work, I think I'm gonna talk to her programmer with this vision codes and say, can you create a report like this and this, this and this? And then hopefully that will get what I'm thinking. The other thing is, is vision at least stays into Excel. So she can, these all, these CPAs, they can work Excel like wizards. She can, I can run a this report, this report, and she can open it later.
Have we purchased the new January stuff?
Gosh, you've had it for so long. Yes. But you're not encouraging any new costs. You've already, it's already sunk costs. It was bought several years.
Do we have it?
Two years ago.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Um, is there an Everbridge update?
Um, so according to Sam, we already have Everbridge. So I even, I'm gonna talk to Sam about it in person on Saturday because I wanna get some clear direction from him about what we can do with it. And I said, the way I understand it from what they told me is if we use our keyword depot bay, we should be able to do things like people who subscribe to it, tell them about the June eighth event. You know, it doesn't, the Everbridge isn't necessarily for communication. It's only an event in an emergency, but we can use it to communicate things. So um, you know, we wouldn't wanna over communicate using it because then people would tune us out. But using an occasional keyword message to push out June eighth emergency preparedness event would be an awesome thing to use it for. Um, we could do, you know, regular testings using it, saying, hey, you know, here's a, here's a test of the emergency broadcast and Everbridge system. So and then I need to work on the communication material, like getting, getting it out and saying, you know, often, wanna know what's going on in depot bay. Often.
I have one more question there.
Yes.
It has to do with legal. Uh, on the Costaneda, Costaneda case.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Who, who is paying our legal fees now? Is it the insurance company or is it us?
We are.
And uh have those been reflected in our monthly reports?
Yeah, I um, I I think I recorded sometime recently about how much we spent. When we got some more of our recent D W D.
Can you tell me how much we spent?
Uh, I don't have that number up yet, but I can email, let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you wanna update us on the harbor area property?
Yeah, before I do that though, I just wanna toss something out to you guys. I have no opinion on this at all. I told him I would ask. So we had a guy that approached me about paying city hall for us. Paying front, what he thinks he would think would be need to do would be to make it pop a little bit by putting some color. First, you talk about some color, I was like, no, we don't want that kind of color. So that blue inside city hall, right inside the window there, that's kinda like an ocean feel. He's talking about like maybe doing the eaves and the fascia boards and stuff like that. He would charge us two hundred dollars to do the whole front side. It's kind of like what he says he does to give back to the community. And he says, I love your city hall. It's really cute. He said, I think it would really benefit from having a little bit of color. He said he would, uh, he thought the top of our fence, or not the fence, the stairs going up and down. He would, he needs to be workers with page chipping and stuff like that. So he's willing to do this for two hundred dollars. I said, I'm not sure if the council would wanna see any color. Uh, like I said, I suggested that ocean color, color in there. Kind of match his vision with the.
Sorry, I forgot about what color.
I just go around it, around the corner when you, before you leave today and then just pop in the city hall in the front, right to the wing of the wall, right on the other side here. That's his color. It's, looks like the ocean today.
Does our script need to be painted?
Um, yes, some of it does. The weather's harsh on it. They did these stairs recently, but the top of the railing definitely needs to be painted.
Question. Uh, I don't know that I'd be for that for a color. I I love this building. It's a traditional schoolhouse building.
That's what I was.
Uh, but is just, you mentioned somebody that wants to give back to the community. My, my first question would be, are you licensed, bonded and insured?
He is, he is. He got his car. He's perfect. Can you paint the car? He would do that, but I don't, I can ask him about that. I can, I can find out what he would charge for.
He painted it pretty blue. I don't know. It just needs to be painted.
And it's on the, it's in the budget to have our staff do it, to do that, but.
They don't get around to it.
Well, they have not around to it yet, cause it's not approved yet.
And there's, there's some signing issues.
There's such a bad.
Yes.
I know.
Yes, so.
Just don't get around to it.
Is our uh building on their stock registered?
No. I'm told that we don't want either one of those on it, but nobody, the city in the past hasn't won either one of them on it because there's a lot of restrictions that way you can't.
And how, but if it's over a certain amount of years, it's automatically on their stock registered building?
I, I just want for the designation. I was gonna say, I would never have to. I think you have to, I know.
I personally don't want any color on the building, but if he wants to do some repairs, that's cool.
I'll see what he wants to do. I, I thought, okay, that color's pretty, but I thought, nah, I'm pretty sure, pretty sure the people who've been here for a long time are not gonna go for chipmunk.
And you have a lot of.
Yeah.
So, but I wanted to ask, I've been meaning to ask and I, I kind of need the answer, but I kind of just wanted to.
That's not something to wanna have.
Are, are you sorry you asked?
No, no, I, you guys just confirmed what I knew was probably gonna be the truth is that, no, the color's pretty, but nah, it changes on historical value. What makes it so cool?
Mayor, I would like to say that, you know, I don't think it's the council's place to be telling our staff what to do, where to do it. I mean, that turns out to be the, you know, supervisor's department and uh so that's my only thought there.
I'm happy to run things I'm not really sure about through you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know a lot of it.
Yeah, I, you know. Don't everybody, why did you do that? Okay, so um on the rest of the agenda is a couple of things under there. The Harbor Park property update, that's Gregerson. Um, I had not heard back from him, so I'm gonna be trying to reach out to them. Um, I forgot though that uh Counselor Rec is a mean machine looking up things. Um, but I do wanna say that I think that the initial look at that was like a million for this nine hundred seventy nine, nine point seven nine acres, so. Um, I will try to bring you something back to the next meeting. I will be reaching out to you if I have something.
Question.
I think what you mean, that, right?
You said.
Yes, you. I'm sorry, I made a sound so soft.
It's the record.
She's a, um, lean, leaning researching machine.
Question here on this. Uh, you know, as I look at this, I can see a couple of properties that we might wanna consider, but this whole thing of a million plus is way out of our league.
That's the Gregerson property and that's the three property, which includes that one that was identified in the first, or the harder master client house property. So, and then Counselor Rec, I suggested maybe two acres of that could, could be parceled out, you know, partitioned out so to a developer to put affordable asking it. That's definitely an option, but I'll provide you more stuff.
That's all, it's all in urban.
Yeah, and I'll provide more stuff. You can talk more about that and, you know, obviously what it says it is, doesn't mean it's a study. But I don't have enough information on that, but Stally, our Stally, I'm not really sure how you pronounce it.
But we're using that lot A right now, aren't we?
Who's using what?
Lot A right here. Aren't we using that?
Yeah. Well, but it, like it goes across the lot right there, yes.
Oh, yes.
And, and we're using that for a, a park bench and some other stuff. Is that correct?
No. Walk down there.
If we talk about encroaching, everybody encroaches on everybody in the city. We encroach, they encroach. So there's probably some encroaching going on there.
Well, lot A is where we headed out the easement for the, the check down.
Right. Exactly.
So.
Yeah, so. So I think, you know, it's probably just timing and the vacation, I don't know, but I'm sure he'll respond back, personally, you know, for them, so. Okay, so this property. So we, this gentleman contacted me and said, Mrs. Stally, Susan Stally, I think it's her person.
Susan.
She passed away and she's leaving property to the, her trust has leave property to the city of depot bay. And we're like, oh, what property? Um, Carla was wanting to get the call and then she provided paperwork, which is these are the four, four lots that she's lived into the city. So today I was able to, I got the trust agreement because we're like, from what I've heard is this resident used to give, um, like, give, give this to the fire department. So we're like, well, should we give it to the fire department or should we give it to the city of depot bay? Well, she gave the property to the city of depot bay. So we got all excited about it. Um, and I heard him talking to P customers on vacation about whether we take and he suggested we do a title report. He doesn't think we need to do an appraisal, so he's working with me on that. Um, I talked to Paul a little bit about it and Grady, they don't have any, you know, heartbeat and heartburn about anything that might be sort of property, but our city engineer will be here next Friday. We'll have him just take a look out there and see what he can see. Kit said that there were, um, in California, he doesn't think we have any kind of requirement here, so it would be entirely up to the council if we wanted to do some kind of environmental assessment before we took and said we wanna take the property. So, so it would be talking about what, you know, what the council would like. I, I can have the city attorney provide a, here's what we should do. Um, but what does, if there's anything the council wants. So we can talk a bit, um.
I have another question with the gentleman.
Question.
Oh, um, the other part is, is we kinda have an idea for use of it, but we'll talk about that after.
So was there ever a structure on this?
There was.
I think there was a structure at one point in time.
I don't even know which uh lot it would have been on.
I do not.
Because that's where we might need the environmental assessment.
Um, from what I understand, Grady did tell me about this once, is that they used the old house that was there, the fire department, you got to use it for a firm.
Which might be.
So we can definitely look at.
It's a, a very um, uh oil tank, you know, uh fuel oil, depending on older structure.
Yeah, and that would be something that our city engineers firm does environmental assessment, so.
I mean, one final question is, are there springs or weapons on the property?
No.
Everywhere.
Alright.
Question. Are there any restrictions on this that would disallow us from selling this property?
No, if you look at the trust, you'll see that there isn't, but I would really wanna talk to you about something else before we talk about selling it.
Yeah.
We had some, and I shared it already, it's House of Salt, but she was all very excited.
Please don't say it a secret.
I will be happy to tell you. So this was actually from our public works supervisor and I had told him about this and we were, so everybody's really excited about it, cause it's like, it's the property right there. We think it's.
It's a commercial zone.
It's a neutral zone.
Yeah.
So. One of the things and we've been talking about it tonight is affordable housing. So one of the things we talked about is challenges sometimes in finding housing for staff. We actually have a couple of staff members right now that are struggling, maybe with their family, you know, or they're having a hard time finding roommates, that sort of thing. We actually have a couple of staff members right now that are struggling. They did it with their family, you know, or they're having a hard time finding roommates, that sort of thing. So one of the things he was thinking about maybe uh product analogy of like either transitional housing or so like say for example, if I had moved here and we had that spot available and there was housing in it, how many lots did you say you could get?
It looks like.
Maybe like a couple of single family homes and a couple of townhomes.
Yeah.
So let's say I couldn't find a place right away. This would have been like a transitional place for me to go to where the city would charge me to stay there. Um and then I would be back for, in the case of one of our employees who's living with his mother right now, he could have a chance to have an apartment and at least support reasonable amount. Now, we don't turn over employees that much that need that, right? So what we would say is that the city would then say, um she had suggested like nurses, we must say to in here and say, okay, depot bay, we have four units. Is there, you know, we make this available for um a year lease and that city employees would always get first dips if there was something open or we do, but we make it like a a year lease that somebody could come in and it would be a place for them to stay, maybe why they were looking for transitional housing. So or maybe why they were looking for permanent housing. So um so anyway, I mean, the council will obviously do what you want with it. If you, there's no restrictions, you can do anything you want with it. He did ask me what he thought we would do with it. I have no idea.
The man did. And from the research I did on the first, she owned Cathedral Park um investments. It was a like it owned, I think, apartment complex. They were into housing.
She had a really this person, the the gentleman that reached out to me, he got the house that's on.
Oh, you had just out and house.
And there.
I'm I'm not hearing these back and forths.
Oh, the gentleman that talked to me, there was more property that she left him, that she left. Apparently she has a beautiful house right on the coast, Seven Eleven Coast, I think it is. He left, she left him that plus three rental properties, so she had more property, but this she wanted to get in the city.
That's very.
We don't know why. Nobody knows why. There's nothing that says why that they found yet. Um but I thought it was pretty awesome. So we'll be able to do whatever we want with it. Absolutely.
Should we move ahead with the title report?
Yeah, so my general thought on this is that we probably should do the environmental just to be sure.
Yeah.
That we're not getting a dump of a property that is gonna cost us some kind of money to to remediate. And then um regarding the idea about rental housing, I just don't think the city is in the business to be a landlord.
We would hire, we could certainly hire somebody to do it.
And I would, I would think that we should uh we should look at whatever's the highest and best use for that and it might be that it's sold to onto someone to to build on it or whatever. It's it's prime commercial land. It's two hundred feet on on highway one oh one. So I mean, that's just my thought. It's, you know, I don't think we as a city should be getting into the landlord business.
And and that is definitely something you wouldn't have to. You could simply hire somebody to manage it for you. Cities do this all the time.
Mayor, I would also add to that that the housing crisis right now is is sort of receding. Uh there's a lot of building going on right now.
I'm sorry, Councilor Daisy, I don't know where that information comes from, but.
Well, there's there, look at Lincoln City, for example. Uh there's over a hundred units of housing going up there that are affordable housing, uh reduced income housing.
We're talking about that. We're doing that.
We have, we have twelve units going here in depot bay.
That's not, that is very restricted housing, I mean, are you talking about down there or you talking about?
Well, because they're for crime ready for the law.
Oh, for here, depot bay, yeah. Down here is short term rentals, right?
Yeah, those are short term rentals. Which is not what the developer told us that it's gonna be.
Oh.
Where he came to talk to someone, they didn't think, but yeah.
Yeah.
I just, we need to move on this because we're gonna move on something to move.
So from what I'm hearing, Matt, so I was definitely saying, look at an environmental study um titled, we did a lot of report.
Now we're gonna. Can our engineer help us?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I said we'll be here next Friday, so.
What were you gonna say, Paul?
I was just gonna say that this is a a pretty unique opportunity for us and you know, looking into the future, it's getting harder and harder to buy property. So if we, the city has something.
I'm not against, you know, I don't wanna tell somebody about it. We don't wanna take that, that uh as for the city developing it, I'm I agree with uh with the councilman, uh we're not in that business.
Yeah, other thing to consider is there's a lot of housing grants. So you could get housing grants to put something in just like they did down there, so.
Yeah, but I think we can, we can put restrictions on what we want, but then, you know, put it on the market.
Correct, I would agree.
So we could, you know, have a much nicer development than we just get on, you know.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Yeah.
Um so do we need a motion for us to be able to spend money that's not in our budget? Because with the, I'm assuming there's no money in our budget to do environmental studies.
And professional services. No, there's money in professional services in our current budget. I haven't spent it all, so you don't need a motion for it because money's already.
So there's different levels of environmental? So environmental level one is just like a look see and then that would identify the need level two would just, you know, more invasive. So um I think we would authorize the level one.
Okay.
And then depending on what comes out, we do the level two.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, are there any closing public comments?
There's no public.
No public, please.
Please lock the chip.
What's this thing?
Oh. Oh, uh council comments. Nothing, can I?
Yeah, come on. Honestly, um um two places where I think it would be, it could be done in-house, but maybe as people are walking, it might help us avoid problems. Um Pirates Cove sidewalk, as you're walking towards um uh Boiler Bay, it's really high up and it's a drop off. We could paint a caution in yellow on the outer edge of that. And then same thing on the bridge. I think the outer parts of each sidewalk on the, you know, both directions just to tell people, hey, there's a drop off. It just would be cheap and I think it's due diligence and, you know, hey, we tried to tell you that there's a drop off there, caution.
Do you think, do you think of not with us to do that?
Um that was my question. Is that ODOT property?
It is.
How do they get away with that? How can they get away with that? That is an absolute danger to everybody.
It's on their list to do in like twenty thirty five.
But I I think that um we.
Where they give us permission to do things on their sidewalks, so maybe we just have to ask.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Um we are running through how challenging it is to ask ODOT anything right now, so we will uh.
Oh, we could just ask for it.
Oh, exactly. I was just gonna say that because I'm told that they don't watch vacations, so maybe it would take years before they notice.
Um just um we'd love to see everybody at the, I think that on Saturday from ten to two. Um free hot dogs with these soda bars. I'm gonna have a really good um good meeting. Some information.
You sleep?
No, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alrighty, we are adjourned.